I want to welcome everybody again to the Planning Commission meeting of August 6, 2014. With that, we'll go ahead and call to order the regular meeting. Can I get a roll call?
Chairman Jennifer Whitman.
Here.
Vice Chairman Joshua Ailer.
Here.
Commissioner David Blazer.
Here.
Commissioner Carl Bloomfield.
Here.
Commissioner David Cavaney.
Here.
Commissioner Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Christopher Sipple.
Present.
Alternate Brent Moody.
Here.
All right. Vice Chairman, we didn't discuss this before, but do I have an approval of the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Chairman Ailer, a second by Commissioner Sipple. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 7, Communications from Citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters not on the agenda. The commission's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. With that, I have one request form so far, and that was from Brent Blake, or Brian Blake, sorry. I think he just walked out, so I'm assuming he doesn't want to speak, but he wanted to speak under the communication from citizens regarding Agenda Item, or the study session we just discussed.
Madam Chair, because that was an item on the agenda, it would not be appropriate for the public comment.
Even though it was on the study session?
It was on the agenda.
Okay.
And we shared that with him.
Oh, perfect. That explains why he's not here. All right, is there anybody else wishing to speak under those circumstances? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Public hearing consent. Consent public hearing items will be heard at one public hearing. After the consent public hearing, these items may be approved by a single motion at the request of a member of the commission of staff. An item may be removed from the consent calendar and may be heard and acted upon separately. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent public hearing and approved under a single motion. With that, we have Agenda Item Number 8, which is SF 14-02. It's a preliminary, request to approve a preliminary plat, an open space plan for Lions Gate Phase 11 by William Lyon Homes, located at the northwest corner of Williamsfield and Wade Drive. We have Agenda Item Number 9, SF 14-07. That's a preliminary plat and streetscape plan for Woodbury Corporation. That is actually requesting a continuance to our September 3 meeting. Agenda Item Number 10 is UP 14-04. It's Sena at Santan Village. It's a request to approve a conditional use permit for property located west of the southwest corner of Santan Village Parkway and Ray Road, and staff has requested to table this item. Agenda Item Number 11, which is UP 14-05. It's extra space storage, request to approve a conditional use permit for property located west of the southwest corner of Baseline Road and Horn Street to allow an indoor storage use in the light industrial zoning district. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody here wishing to speak on any four of these matters that we just raised? I have no public comment cards. So with that, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais for discussion, possible motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Vice Chairman?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as noted in staff's report.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Chairman Ailer, a second by Commissioner Peterson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Moving on to the public hearing non-consent portion of our agenda. Non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support of or opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number in which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. With that, we have Agenda Item Number 12 and 13, which are companion cases. It's a request for a minor general plan amendment to change the land use classification of approximately 18.6 acres, located at the northwest corner of McQueen and Elliott Road, from community commercial and neighborhood office to residential three and a half to five dwelling units per acre. And the companion zoning case, which would change the land use from community commercial and neighborhood office to SFD. And with that, we'll invite up Mr. Nathan Williams, again.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Provided an aerial here for you with this 18.6 acre site. As you can see, it's a combination of neighborhood office, community commercial, as you mentioned. You saw this in June at a study session, and the applicant went back, incorporated some of those comments, which we'll kind of get into a little bit. As you can see, there's SFD surrounding the parcel, parcel to the north and east, an existing subdivision, excuse me, yeah, villages at North Shore. It's an existing subdivision, and there's some existing commercial, this office that you see down here tucked in, that just came in and had a preliminary meeting with us, so that may be coming through soon. But in any case, this is the land use change and the rezoning change. This is the area highlighted here, and here's the development plan, which we've looked at. Some of the changes I'd highlight, most notably, they've lost two acres, or I mean, two, excuse me, two parcels in order to add this gate here, which we discussed last time. It was egress only. They went back, took a look, made it work with our standard details, and provided an ingress, egress with stacking. So you'll have multiple access points, the gate here, gate here. So it was 78 lots, last time it's 76 now, and it'll be a gated, gated community, gated subdivision. You see the open space areas located on the buffer, on the perimeter, or peripheral to buffer the lots, the residential lots. The lots, really the only deviations they're asking for is to increase what the standards are in SFD. Standard lot size would be 3,000. They're asking for 5,000. Building height is allowed to be 36 feet, three stories. They're obviously just asking for 30 feet, two stories. This is comparable, or this is, neighbors were comfortable with this. This is what they, they did not want a three-story, and the applicant didn't want to construct a three-story home anyhow. So other deviations would be the side yard setback. They're requesting, what's required is zero and five. They're requesting five and five. Essentially, those are the only deviations. They'd have a gross density of four dwelling units an acre. I've outlined where we feel that the general plan amendment and the rezoning complies with the goals and policies of the general plan. Staff really has no concerns. There was some, there was some discussion on this access point to the office. They've shown it on here. Traffic engineering is comfortable with when that does come through in that office park, or whatever it may be in the future develops. They will pay to push through and connect to this where there's a full motion with a light, but this is how it'll be shown on the, on the development plan, and then the plat will, you know, they would record an easement across there so that they could improve that whenever that developed. Again, I'd note that really staff doesn't have any concerns and be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant's here as well.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for staff, or comments regarding this application? Okay, thank you. With that, we'll invite the applicant. Welcome back, Mr. Baugh. If you can give your name and city of residence for the record.
Thank you, Adam Baugh, with you Morse, and resident of Gilbert, 4062 East Washington Avenue. Thanks for your time, and I appreciate what Nathan's done, and you've seen this before at your last planning commission, so I don't know how much background you'd like me to provide. I think staff's done a very thorough job, and I do have a presentation if you want something a little bit more comprehensive, but for an abbreviated version, unless you prefer otherwise, let me give you a little bit of background about this site. It actually was general plan for three to five and a half acres up until 2004, and in 2004, was the first time somebody thought about doing something different. They proposed some cluster housing that wasn't very well received, and eventually they proposed a commercial development that at the same time also wasn't very well received, and only after significant compromise and mediation with the developer and the community next to it, did they come up with a compromised zoning. And so what, the reason why you see this odd configuration today is because some of it got built out, but the reality is the compromised zoning, which if you can imagine, the buffer, which I like to call like that L shape there, and the same L shape on the western half, really complicated site. It had some neighborhood office zoning, and the rest was community commercial. And with those types of conditions, it really made it very impractical for development. Now, this is kind of the introduction to town of Gilbert, and so usually this would be one of the first parcels to develop, but the fact of the matter is, development has long passed this site, and it's been longstanding infill site. There's a lot of other things, like private sewer easements, limited access, some environmental cleanup. The odd configuration just practically have made it very difficult to proceed this way. To the developer's credit, he's found success in these odd, difficult sites, and as a result, I think he's found a way to work around some of these solutions by bringing a project that is compatible with the neighborhood. Our proposals, SFD just like them, our lot sizes are compatible in size, setbacks, and all natures. And I think with regard to what you've seen, was it, I believe just in June, at study session, the key points we heard were providing an ingress, an egress point off of McQueen, not just off of Elliott, which we did. I think we lost like three lots to accommodate that, but that was something that we heard loud and clear and we wanted to accommodate. The other thought was about moving the other gate on Elliott back a little deeper so we could accommodate the cross access, which we did. And part of this project allows not only this to develop, but it helps succeed, it helps the office project next door to succeed as well. And ultimately, we've provided more open space based on staff's comments and feedback, and some centralized amenities as well. We've been very well supported with the HUA. One of the first things that we did was meet with the HUA of the next door, and through their support and help, we came up with this plan today. And I think to staff's credit, they steered us into adding the eastern L-shaped parcel. Because it's multi-ownership, it was hard for them to think that that would develop independent of ours, and we really appreciate that insight. It took a lot of time. We began in November, and only after many months of negotiating with the owner of that L-shaped parcel, were we able to wrap it up and bring it in. I think staff did a good job in suggesting that, because ultimately, it ensures a better quality development, and it removes some of these vacancies in these infill sites that, quite frankly, will remain vacant until somebody's willing to step up and develop it. I have definitely given you a very quick and abbreviated presentation, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Baugh. Are there any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Is there, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody here, well, I guess we did that before, but is there anybody here wishing to speak on this matter? I don't have any public comment forms, but for this particular case, but any case going forward, if you want to speak on an item, there's forms in the back that you'll need to fill out and bring to this round table up front. But with that, since there's nobody here wishing to speak on that matter, we'll bring it back to staff. Is there anything further that you'd like to add? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the dais for discussion, possible motion. Don't everybody jump at once. Anyone?
Well, I'll talk real quick. I'd just like to thank staff for their hard work on this one. I can see infill sites are really challenging, and especially this one. I mean, I don't think, there's another site in Maricopa County that looks like this one. I mean, with all the weird Ls and turns, and so with staff working with the developer, and the developer, we're taking in our comments to have different access points. I really think we've moved this project into something that can work for the community. So overall, I'm in favor of approval for this project, and that's where I'd go.
All right. Commissioner Sipple?
I'd like to echo what the vice chair said and add, thank the applicant for taking our feedback from the last time we met, and especially with the access point further up there, and just kudos to you and the staff for your hard work for this infill project in particular.
Commissioner Cavaney?
Thanks. It's a creative effort, and I certainly applaud it, applicant and town staff. Thank you very much. This is definitely an affirmative vote for me.
Commissioner Peterson?
It sounds like everybody's in agreement. Should I just make a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. I move to recommend to the town council approval of GP 14-02, a minor general plan amendment.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Peterson, a second by Vice Chairman Ailer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously.
Second motion?
Yes.
For the reasons set forth in the staff report, move to recommend approval to the town council for Z 14-14, as requested, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Peterson, a second by Vice Chairman Ailer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. All right, thank you. Moving on to the administrative item portion of our agenda, Agenda Item Number 14 of the minutes. Consider approval of the minutes of the study session and regular meeting of July 2, 2014. Are there any comments or changes to those?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, Commissioner Sipple?
I move to approve the minutes from the right, from the study session and regular meeting of July 2, 2014.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Sipple, a second by Commissioner Blazer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Okay, moving on, we will recess the planning commission and reconvene as the board of adjustment. We'll hear Agenda Item Number 15, which is AP 14-01. It's Appeal to the Town of Gilbert Board of Adjustment from the Town of Gilbert Zoning Administrator's Zoning Interpretation regarding the location and use of a stable on property located at 2604 East Washington Avenue in Gilbert. The property is currently zoned, single-family, 43. With that, we will turn it over to Ms. Labierre.
Thank you, Chair Whitman, and board members. This item is an appeal of a zoning interpretation for 2604 East Washington Avenue. The zoning interpretation relates to the use of the property as a commercial stable and where corrals and accessory structures are located on the site. Co-compliance had responded to a complaint, and based on their observations, they concluded that horse boarding and commercial horse training were occurring on the site, and so the property owner asked for a formal interpretation from the zoning administrator, and that was issued in April. In their appeal letter, the property owner's attorney, Mr. Lasoto, he's questioned whether, or basically what constitutes "commercial," and he believes that the everyday meaning of "commercial" is a for-profit venture. So Mr. Lasoto says his client is not operating a business. This is an aerial view of the site. You can see it's located north of Elliott and west of Greenfield Road. It's across the street from Greenfield Elementary. It was annexed in the May, in May of 2006, and there's a home with some accessory structures that were existing prior to annexation. It's about a one-acre parcel, and the neighboring parcels are also a little, little larger than an acre, and it's zoned SFD 43. In response to the appeal, staff separated the code issues into three distinct areas. The first question is, what constitutes a commercial stable? A commercial stable involves other people's horses, and/or fees are charged for services. Prior to annexation, the county did not permit boarding of other people's horses without a use permit. The property does not contain the necessary lot size or a use permit from the town for commercial horse boarding, and if this is not commercial horse boarding, then in residential areas, Gilbert, we specify that horse, horse boarding is only for horses owned by the occupant and not for compensation. The second question is, where may the shade structures that house animals be located? Both the county and Gilbert would consider those shade structures as accessory structures. The county required, prior to annexation, a 30-foot side yard setback. In Gilbert, accessory structures that house animals are specifically called out in residential areas and must be set back 20 feet. Otherwise, shade structure would require a five, little, five-plus setback, depending on the height of the structure in Gilbert. The last question is, where may corral fencing be used? A fence is not considered an accessory structure, and the county allows fences and horses to be penned or corralled in the areas, the existing areas shown on the aerial. Gilbert also allows fencing up to eight feet tall in the side and the rear yard setback. Pipe rail fencing, we would view as open fencing, and that is also permitted. Staff's recommendation is that you uphold the zoning interpretation that boarding of other people's horses, or in other words, commercial, a commercial stable, is not a permitted use, and that the shade structures used for animals do not comply with the code. The board of adjustment may wish to overturn the zoning interpretation with respect to the corral fencing, because Gilbert allows fences, and the county allows fences in the area shown on the aerial. That's all I have for you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Labierre. Is there any questions for staff? I guess I have one question. So remind me again, the, you said the shade structures for the horses, were those annex, were the shade structures there at the time of annexation?
Yes, they do show on aerials prior to annexation.
Okay, and you're saying that, that the shade, if the shade structure was removed, and it was just the open fencing, the normal horse corral fencing, that that would be permitted?
Yes.
Under current code?
Under current code, and the county would have allowed it.
Just the shade structure that causes the issue? Okay. Yeah, Commissioner Cavaney?
Is it the entire shade structure, or just a portion? Is it the portion that abuts the property, or is it the portion that's center of the property?
Under the prior county requirements, the shade structure would have been, would need to have been set back 30 feet. So one of the shade structures that is parallel with the property line would need to be completely moved over, and the one that's more perpendicular, a portion of that would have to be removed.
I see, okay.
No, I'm sorry. You'll have to wait until, there will be public hearing and public comment time. I had another question with regard to the staff report on page, page number four, third paragraph down. It says, "Maricopa County Planning Staff has also confirmed that up until 2009, prior Rule 43 would have only permitted the boarding of horses with an approved special use permit." Is that permitted now, after 2009, without a special use permit?
Their code has a provision now that allows the boarding of other people's horses. I believe it's up to five horses.
Without a special use permit?
Right. In this particular zone.
And that happened after 2000, in 2009?
It, it looks like the code was updated in 2009, the county code.
And they annexed in 2006?
Yes.
And can I ask a question?
Yes, Commissioner Bloomfield?
When they, when the resident purchased the home, was all of this existing at that point in time also? Just curious.
Chair Whitman and board member Bloomfield, that is my understanding, is that when you look at the aerials, that you see these structures, but I would suggest we ask the applicant to confirm that.
Certainly, thank you.
Any further questions of staff?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Labierre. With that, we'll invite the applicant up. You can state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Tim Lasota, and I live in Phoenix, and I would like to start out by addressing the question that Commissioner Bloomfield asked, and I thought it was a good question, and the answer is absolutely yes. Ms. Hill purchased this property in 1984, and you have an aerial in your materials that is actually from 1992, but it shows the, it shows the property as it existed then, as it existed in 1984 also, and you can clearly see the two shade structures in that photo. And the other thing I think that's worthy of mentioning is that when this, when the town annexed this property, and the properties around it into the town of Gilbert in 2006, they made a commitment to the residents that the area would stay as it was. And this area, for generations, has been horse property, and there have been various uses in the area, including, I know that the city would call it boarding, but I don't think that most people view taking someone else's horses and letting them, keep them at your property as a commercial venture. You wouldn't, if you were a business, you wouldn't be in business very long under those circumstances. So I think that the city made a commitment that frankly, they're, they're not keeping with this effort to essentially say that this is now not a legal use. Now, I also wanted to point out that the staff, I think, got it right on the shade structure, structure the first time, because the last time we were here, they said the shade structure was a lawful, non-conforming use. That was in their July 2 report. Now, we had a continuance, a council for one of the neighbors and I, you know, we discussed it. Unfortunately, we couldn't come to any resolution, but I would point out that the staff got it right with their first report when they said that the shade structure was a lawful, non-conforming use. One of the things the staff says in their report is that, well, okay, it was, it existed at the time of annexation, but they've, they've offered no evidence to prove that it was legal at that time. A permit, a variance, anything of that kind. Well, there may be, there may have at one time been such evidence, but the county simply does not have those records anymore. And it's for that reason and other reasons that the county has actually taken the step of grandfathering all these uses in. I'm going to read to you from a county ordinance that was adopted, and this was adopted in 2011. It was mentioned before, but the reason, the county essentially did this for two reasons. One of the reasons is because they just had so many uses like this, that the county had never done anything about any of these properties. So people had properties, they boarded horses, and the county never did anything about it, and, and they apparently didn't keep very good records either. So what the county did is they said that unless an earlier date is specified in this ordinance, any building or structure that was existing, or any use of land that was lawfully existing as of January 1, 2000, or as of the effective date of the subsequent amendments, may continue even though such used building or structure does not conform to the regulations of this ordinance or amendments thereto for the zoning district in which it was located, provided the size shape regulation, size shape configuration of the parcel remains unchanged since January 1, 2000. So in other words, under this grandfathering provision, Ms. Hill would, if she had remained in the county, most certainly would have been grandfathered into it. And again, the reason they did this, or at least one of the reasons, is because they just don't have the records. There could very well be, be evidence of a permit, of a variance, of something of that nature, but they don't have it, and that's why I think they took the wise step of saying, you know, these, these uses have existed for a long time, so we're going to go ahead and grandfather them in. And Ms. Hill's property is only one example of many in this area that are, that are very much similar to where her structures are, and that's just the way it's been for generations. So, you know, I think we have to keep the commitment to Ms. Hill and, and stick with, at least on the shade structure, the staff's original report on this. And also, I just, I have to take issue with this notion that "commercial" is boarding someone else's horses, because I don't think that's consistent with the, sort of the common sense view of that word. But I think the main thing is the shade structure has been there since at least 1984. We can't say before then, when it was there, because that's when Ms. Hill bought the property. So we'd ask that you reverse the interpretation of the zoning administrator. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lasota. Can we get a copy of what you just read from, from the county?
Yes. And I think it, I think it's in the report, because I did, I emailed it into staff, but it's from the October 19, 2011 Board of Supervisors meeting, but should I?
Hold on, just a second, let me.
It's Attachment 6, Madam Chair.
Okay. Okay. I'll take a minute to look at that in a minute. Are there any questions for the applicant? No? All right, thank you, Mr. Lasota.
Thank you.
We do have a few cards up here for people who are wishing to speak on this item. The first I have is Brennan Ray. If you could come to the dais and give your city of residence for the record.
Good evening, Chairman Whitman, members of the Board of Adjustment. Brennan Ray, 702 East Osborne, here on behalf of Lori Greco and Joshua Plum. They are residents within this community and obviously are, have an interest in the outcome of the appeal of the zoning administrators' interpretation. Certainly appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight and discuss from our perspective, our concurrence with the zoning administrator's initial determination as well as staff's subsequent report. And I'll get into a little bit details in that. We might disagree on one item, but by and large, we agree with staff's report as presented to you tonight. Ms. Greco and Mr. Plum have lived in the community since approximately 2003. When they purchased that property, they did so knowing that there was an ability for residents to have horses and other animals on that property. And certainly they respect the property rights of others to have animals on their property providing that they are in compliance with the applicable code and ordinances that affect this property and others around it. We know that there are some concerns that will be raised tonight, concerns that we are, that through this determination, depending on the outcome of the board, that we are somehow taking away property rights that may have existed in the county when the properties that we're talking about were annexed into the town. And as I believe was communicated to the residents, and there might be a disagreement on this, but as I understand it from speaking with town officials that were at the annexation hearings when these properties came in, the discussion was had, if you have a legal use in the county, you can expect that legal use to continue within the town. And that clearly is consistent with the provisions of your town's zoning ordinance, which provides in, I believe it's Article 1, that specifically states, and makes provisions for legal, non-conforming structures and legal, non-conforming uses. And it's very clear what those requirements are. It's very clear what the requirements were in the county at the time of annexation and that existed even before Ms. Hill purchased her property in 1984, 1985. We certainly appreciate the time, energy and effort that's been expended by staff from the zoning administrator, code enforcement, planning staff and even the legal department in looking at this issue and certainly wanted to recognize them. Just to emphasize on some of the points that Catherine made tonight and to paint a, paint a clear picture, I never know how this thing works.
Try pushing the button.
I've been coming here a while and I still don't know this. So this, this is a picture of the property in the condition that it was prior to annexation. You might not be able to see, but the date on this photo taken from the Maricopa County website is dated February 1st, 2006. And as you can see, the property exists more or less in its current condition today, with the exception of, obviously there's been some additional fencing that I believe from looking at historical aerials was added in 2010 and there might have been some fencing that was added along here in the same time period. But for purposes of our discussion tonight, we're focusing on this building right here and this accessory structure right there. So that's, that is February of 2006. This aerial is how the property existed as of October of 2006, subsequent to annexation, which I believe occurred in approximately May of 2006. Again, same condition of the property. So what we are focusing on and what staff focused on in their report is what was the condition of this property at the time of annexation? We take that picture and we focus on what it was, what were the requirements in the county at the time and not to belabor too much, I submitted, or Ms. Greco submitted a letter, it was included in your staff report and I presume that it was reviewed in the course of your preparation for this meeting. But just to emphasize a few key points from, from your staff report and what was Exhibit 4 to my, to Ms. Greco's letter, this, this obviously is not Ms. Hill's property, but it is designed to explain the county's requirements for setbacks of accessory structures that, the requirements that I, if I need to, I can show you in, in the county zoning ordinance where the accessory structures must be set back. And when we're talking about the side yard setback, which is where we are with, again, these two structures right there, the side yard setback, it must be set 30 feet away from the property line. And that's, it is clear and unquestionable that those were the county requirements that existed well before Ms. Hill purchased her property in 1984. And so when you look at that and you look at this, this aerial and we have gone through and on this, which is Exhibit 5 to Ms. Greco's letter, which clearly identifies where the rear yard setback is and where the side yard setback that she would have had to comply with at the time of, excuse me, prior to annexation, so the county requirements. And as you will see, with this being the side yard, 30 feet more or less is indicated here, this is the rear yard, we're not focused on that, but you will see that this accessory structure here, and although you can't see it because of this picture, this is a current aerial, that shade structure there are well within the 30-foot side yard setback. And I can appreciate the discussion that Mr. Lasota had and some of the points that he raised about the county records and the subsequent amendment. And that amendment was processed, as he said, in 2011. And that amendment grandfathered certain uses that it existed because it was a problem in the county. And with all due respect to Mr. Lasota, we're not talking about the county, we're talking about the town of Gilbert. We're talking about the requirements that existed in 2006, prior to annexation and subsequent to annexation. Because the question that this board has to reach and the conclusion that they have to, or the steps that we'll need to go through tonight is similar to the ones that Mr. Malilla went through on his zoning administrator's determination and the ones that staff went through. And that is, did this structure comply with the county's requirements at the time of annexation such that it would be considered a legal, non-conforming structure? And as the, as the visual evidence demonstrates, it did not. There are no permits, there are no variances, there are no records that indicate that it was there. And whether they were lost or not, maybe yes, maybe no. But the fact is, is that we have hard, physical evidence that shows that this structure and this structure here did not comply with the county's setback requirements. Additionally, they were required to obtain a building permit. No records of a building permit have been provided. They were also required to obtain a zoning clearance. The requirement for a building permit and the zoning clearance in the county was not only for this structure, for these accessory structures, but for corral fencing as well. And if I need to, I can show you in the county's ordinance where those requirements are made for corral fencing. So with no permit, obviously, we agree with staff that this was a, this is not a legal, non-conforming use, that this was not legal in the county and should not be, continue to exist under the town and that the zoning administrator and staff's determination should be upheld in that regard. I won't belabor the commercial aspect of it, again, for the reasons that, I know there are a lot of people ready to speak, I would incorporate by reference the arguments made in Ms. Greco's letter that is included in your packet as far as it being a commercial activity. There's ample evidence within Ms. Hill's, excuse me, within Ms. Greco's letter as well as staff to determine that there was commercial operations that existed on this site through advertising, through people coming to the site that were not, were not related to Ms. Hill or had anything to do with her in any way except for the fact to go there for that business. And so, we certainly recognize that under the town's requirements, I believe she's entitled to have four horses for personal use, they must be hers, or any combination, I think, of three large animals or three small. But we certainly recognize and would respect the town's requirements for what Ms. Hill and others in the community are allowed to have on their property under the town's ordinance. And so with that, again, we would request that this board uphold the zoning administrator's determination with respect to the commercial use, with respect to the accessory structure. And although we believe that the fence, the corral fencing is not legal because it wasn't legal in the county, because it didn't have the permit and the zoning clearance, we recognize that there is a practical problem when you try to enforce the fencing. And so with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions or provide additional explanation and would request, again, this, this board's upholding the zoning administrator's determination.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. So I have a question for you. You want us to look only at the town's basic requirements with the county required at that time of annexation, correct?
Yes, Chairman Whitman, that is correct because when you're, when you're looking at annexation, you've got to focus on, was it legal in the county before? And if it was, great, that use or structure can continue, but if it is not, then it is, it is subject to the town's requirements. I will add-
Only, only if the town's requirements aren't more restrictive, correct?
No, I do not believe there is, I do not believe, and I certainly defer to legal, but I do not believe the question turns on whose requirements are more strict.
Well, I think, and maybe we'll have town council clarify for us, but if the property is annexed and there's a use or, in this particular instance, fencing that is permitted in the town but may not have been permitted in the county, I assume that by annexation, that property owner gets the rights of annexation using the town's ordinance?
That would be correct, Chairman Whitman.
Thank you. So the fencing, under staff's interpretation, is in compliance, legal, non-conforming? Is that correct?
The fencing?
The fencing. Is that the way staff?
Staff's interpretation of the fencing is that it complies with current-
Code requirements. Okay.
Is there a question? I apologize.
So I think the question was, I think you're, is your position that you're, you're opposed to the interpretation that staff is providing regarding the fencing?
If you'll, if you'll give me one minute, I want to confer with my client on that.
Okay.
But if you'll give me, just permit me, one minute. Chairman Whitman, yes, we are, we are, we are okay with, with staff's interpretation as far as the finding goes. We get there a little bit differently probably than staff does, but at the end, in terms of conclusion with respect to the fencing, we agree.
So you're in agreement with staff's recommendation on all three aspects?
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions for Mr. Ray? Vice Chairman Ayler?
So, in understanding this graphic, I just want to make sure, this is the county's graphic at 2006 or is this today's? The 30, is it the 30-foot setback on the side yard, the green, is it been continuous or setback?
To see if I can understand your question through the chair, Board Member Ayler. This is a current aerial of the property, but what is on it are the county requirements that would have been in place prior to annexation, which in that, and that is this graphic that illustrates, and this is in the county, where buildings had to be located in the side, in the rears, setbacks, this takes this, the requirements that it discusses and superimposes it over here. So this is the county's requirements. I know that Ms. Lorbeer, in her presentation, said the town's requirements are 20 feet. I will add that there are private restrictions that govern the property that require setbacks to be 30 feet, but those are private restrictions, CCNRs, plats, things like that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cavaney?
So, I've read, I've read Ms. Greco's complaint or her letter explaining the reasons that she supports the board's decision. Was, and it seems like largely it's a repeat of the, of the staff's case. Was there a singular issue that triggered this complaint? Was there something specific? I mean, obviously now we know all the issues staff has kind of rooted out and that need to be discussed, but was there something specific? Was it smell? Was it flies? Was it, was it, what was it? Was it noise? Was it customers coming to and fro? Is there something that is specifically at the root of this concern?
Through the chair, Board Member Cavaney, yes, there is. Initially, the concern dealt with the commercial activities that were taking place on the property. The fact that for a period of time, there were no horses boarded on this property. I do not believe Ms. Hill owns any herself, but I will certainly defer to counsel and Ms. Hill on that issue. But my understanding is that she does not own any horses. And so, again, my client purchased her property in 2003 and so there was this period where there was nothing there. And then all of a sudden, we get this intense activity of commercial operations, of riding parties, of children's parties, of riding lessons and all kinds of, of commercial activities that took place on the property, which caused my client concern. And through many discussions with code enforcement as well as members of planning staff, there were other issues that came up relative to smell, relative to flies, relative to stuff like that. In particular, again, recognizing that Ms. Greco and her husband understand that these are horse properties, that people can have horses on there, the concern dealt with the intensification of horses in a given area, in this area up here and in these areas right here. Because what you've got, obviously with corrals, enclosures, things of that nature, is an area for horses to feed, eat, defecate, you know, do other horsey stuff, so.
Sure, sure, okay. So, so I guess this perhaps could be solved if some of those components could be shifted elsewhere on the site, perhaps? I mean, I'm just assuming, I'm just trying to set some groundwork for maybe where we can take this to find an amenable ground for everybody. That's the hope here tonight, for me.
Through the, through the chair, Board Member Cavaney, I know that, and I know that Mr. Lasota and I did try to explore those possibilities-
Okay.
-of where, of if there was an alternate setback or an alternate configuration that could be reached. And unfortunately, through no fault of Mr. Lasota or Ms. Hill or my clients, we were just unable to come to an agreement and have come before this, this board tonight.
Thank you.
With the, I assume though, since the fencing is no longer part of the discussion, well, I guess it is, but staff's interpretation is that it's conforming, the homeowner would basically just need to remove that shade structure in that particular area to become compliant with the shade structure issue? So all that remained were fencing?
Correct, Chairman Whitman. If we had our cake, we'd want obviously no-
Well, of course, you want it moved.
Yeah, we want everything moved entirely.
Entirely.
And we think there's, there's reason and justification clearly in, in the zoning administrator's interpretation- And we think there's reason and justification clearly in the zoning administrator's interpretation and our own analysis, but with respect to where, you know, yeah, the shade structure and-
If it were removed, it would become compliant in that respect? Okay. I'm sorry? Further questions or comments for Mr. Ray?
I have one. Jordan, or, excuse me, Brennan, sorry. Mr. Ray, you talked about having your cake. What is your cake on this one? What are you looking for? Because if it's noncompliant and not lawful, and it all gets removed, who pays for that? You know, that kind of thing, because it was here when it was purchased by the owner. So, you're asking a great deal, at least from my perspective, so I'm curious as to what the cake is and how it gets eaten, so.
Sure, happy to answer that. Through the chair, Board Member Bloomfield, our cake is for everything to be removed and for it to comply with the private requirements of a 30-foot setback for accessory structures, fencing, things of that, that house animals. And I haven't got into private requirements because I know this is not the purview of the board, and so, I will not go into those. But yes, it's that. Alternatively, I think for purposes of what we're talking about here tonight, from the town's perspective and from this board's perspective, it's to comply with the town's requirements and setback requirements, and that is that any accessory structures would be located 20 feet from the property line. I believe that's what the SF 43 code permits, and so, it would be that it's at 20 feet. With respect to who pays for it, that's a good question. I don't know that I have a good answer for it, because I know that from our analysis, independent from staff's analysis, I mean, we went through and looked at all of this as well. We had the same discussions with Maricopa County Planning Staff, a particular staff member that's been there with a very long time and has an extensive working knowledge of the county's requirements and how those have evolved over the course of time. And so, in looking at that, we know that from what the code required and what we're seeing today, it wasn't a legal building. And so, it's unfortunate that if, that these structures existed, presuming they did, at the time Ms. Hill acquired the property, and I would tell her to go look for recourse against the person that sold it to her, presuming that they're alive and that there is recourse and legal and lawful means to be able to do that, which I don't know if there is.
Commissioner Blazer?
Where does your client live in relation to this property?
So, looking on this aerial, my client lives in this property here. If you need a bigger aerial, I can show it. She is immediately adjacent to and shares a common property line with Ms. Hill.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cavaney?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Ray, you mentioned that the commercial activities were also a great concern, in fact, ultimately, the primary concern. I guess one of the, and I'm trying to sort that through in my head and how that could be perhaps softened here, but are there lights on this property, pole lights that shine at night and create a, I could see that being a problem. If they're not there, I'm curious how late these activities go and if that's maybe part of the save here.
Chairman, Board Member Cavaney, let me find out about the lights and then address the second-
Sure, absolutely.
Thankfully, we normally don't take comments from the audience.
No lights, okay.
Chairman, Commissioner, or Board Member Cavaney, given that this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, I want to make sure I accurately reflect things. With all due respect to people in the audience, I have confirmed that there are no lights on the property. With respect to the commercial activity and hours of operation, we don't believe that any commercial activity should exist at all. The town's ordinance is, the town's code is very clear on what is a commercial activity and what is not, what constitutes commercial stables, what constitutes residential stables, as well as the county's ordinance. Back at the time when this property was annexed and even before, the county's own ordinance would not permit commercial activities or commercial boarding to take place on residentially zoned property. This property was owned rule 43 in the county, so we appreciate that she is entitled to have her four horses and certainly will not deny her that, provided that she owns those horses per the town's requirements, but as far as the commercial activities go, we, there doesn't need to be any.
And the commercial activities, as I've seen in the reports, would be the riding lessons, the boarding, anything else that is of concern in the commercial, or considered in your viewpoint as the commercial activities?
Through the chair, Board Member Cavaney, I believe in addition to those activities that you mentioned, there was birthday parties that would be held on the property-
Okay, okay.
-where people would be able to come and as part of that activity, ride horses and things of that nature.
Okay, good, thank you, thank you.
Any further comments or questions for Mr. Ray? Of course. All right, thank you, Mr. Ray.
Thank you.
Moving on, I have a request from Jean Fowler, who said they would like to speak, didn't mark for or against. You can give your name and city of residence for the record.
Madam Chair, given the extensive number of citizens here tonight, would you like to impose a time limit on public comment?
Certainly, I think our normal time limit is three minutes. I just don't know if the public is aware of that. We only have a few more requests to speak, but if we could, there's a little light at the podium, a little timer, in the top, back behind the computer, somebody can show you. Here you go. If you happen to see it go red, that just indicates that your time is up.
Okay, my name is Jean Fowler. I live on the same street as this property, and I just want to say that, first of all, this entire neighborhood of 38 property owners is all fenced, just exactly like Jane Hill's is fenced. And if this, in fact, was against the county rules when this development was put in, how could that possibly be with, when every property has that fence the way it's done, that pipe-rail fence? Good question?
Yeah, I don't think the fencing is the issue. I think it's the use. That's the question.
And then, the second thing is, of those same 38 properties, more than 20 have a building or a horse corral with a shade or a structure of some sort right at or within three feet of the property line. Okay, these are older homes in this neighborhood. How can that be against the county rules, or why didn't the county do something about it when it was built?
Right. A lot of times, I'll just give you background, a lot of times, owners develop it that way without necessary approvals from the city, and the city doesn't know about it, or the county doesn't know about it until there's a complaint and that the property is reviewed and investigated for compliance.
And then, the CCNRs for this development, there is nothing in there that says that sideline has to be 20 feet. There is nothing in there. Now, what goes first, the CCNRs, which are deeded, recorded for this neighborhood, or the zoning that now the town of Gilbert wants to do?
They're totally separate issues.
Exactly. So, if CCNRs say, "Our neighborhood was built the way it's okay," and it's been all those many years, and more than 20 existing residents have those buildings and structures, what are you going to do about that if you make Jane Hill move hers?
Are you supportive of-
Does everybody else have to move theirs?
Ms., I can't speak to the others. All I can address is what we're discussing here tonight, but are you in support of the operations and the way the parcel's developed currently?
You mean the way it is existing, Jane Hill's property?
Correct.
I think it's wonderful the way it is.
Okay.
I do. And for people to be able to come there and ride horses and learn how, where else in this town are you going to be able to have that opportunity? Why would you want to take that away?
All right.
This is a great place, a wonderful family neighborhood, and there's no reason for this to even be happening. That's all I would have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. With that, I'd like to invite up Mr. Scott Fowler, says he wishes to speak. If you can give your name again and city of residence for the record.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm Scott Fowler, and I live at the same place that Jean lives-
It's convenient.
-at 2043. We live in the same cul-de-sac, but one of the issues that I see is what complies is the actual building, it does comply, the shade structure that exceeds the limits on the side, how do you determine if that's permanent or temporary? I mean, you look through your regulations and stuff, a horse shade, which it is, is that permanent? I mean, it has to be affixed, so if a wind comes up, it can't blow down the road, but, you know, what is fair on this thing? When you have that horse shade and it's, say, it's not in compliance by just a little bit, but the truth of the matter is, if you look in an aerial view of the whole area and surrounding areas, we're all in trouble. I mean, we're, nobody's complying with everything, so it's, you know, you take one down and everyone else is going to fall on this too. And we come to the meeting, it's like, you know, we have to speak up, or everything that we have, I mean, we're in violation too, you might as well come after us, but what is considered temporary or permanent on a horse shade, which is in question, the only thing in question now, because the setback on the building itself is okay, is the way I understand what they were saying. Is that correct?
I think the fencing is permitted by right in the town. I think the shade structure, what they're saying, is not in compliance with code.
But could that shade structure be considered temporary?
No. If it's tied to the ground, as in with a foundation or a column, the only way it would be temporary is if it was on wheels or something that is not anchored to the ground. So, that's your differential between temporary and a permanent structure.
You know, to have a shade structure, you couldn't have it on wheels, because with the wind-
Well, that was why it wouldn't be, it would be temporary. Temporary would only be temporary. I mean, temporary is a few days, or an actual, an actual structure is tied to the ground and that becomes, you know, a-
Permanent unmovable structure.
Permanent structure.
But is that written somewhere where someone-
That's the building code.
Like, somebody like myself would read that and understand that?
Yeah, sometimes I don't understand the code, but the code, it's certainly written in the code and can be, you can reach out to staff, staff can point you in the right direction. It's also on the town, it's website.
Okay, is my time up?
It is. Is there something else you'd like to quickly add?
Well, I think, you know, as you're addressing this, it is fair. I mean, if you do take an aerial look over all the structures in our neighborhood, we're all in violation, and even having horses or what is considered commercial, if you have a friend come over and they stay overnight and perhaps they rode the horse to your house and you're boarding that horse overnight, are you commercial? I mean, where is, you know, friendship and hospitality come in?
The old days?
Yeah.
I would like to clarify too, though, that I know that you bring up surrounding properties and their uses and existing uses and what's developed on their property, but we can't look at that. The only thing we can look at before us tonight is what's been presented before us tonight. And so, with that, I'd like to know, are you, I assume, but I would like you to state, are you in support of the homeowner's current regulations and development?
Yes.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. Is there any questions for Mr. Fowler? Ms. Peterson, or Board Member Peterson?
How long have you lived in the neighborhood?
12 years.
12 years. So, you've been there prior to the annexation, through the annexation to now?
Correct, we went through that, yeah.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Fowler? Thank you. I have a card for Troy Haviland, I might have completely messed that up, but if you could give your name, the right name, and city of residence for the record, that'd be great.
You said it right.
Oh, good.
Troy Haviland, Gilbert, Arizona. We've been in the neighborhood for a little over 22 years. I think one thing that we're slightly missing here on this project is, when we were annexed in to the city, we were told that we would be able to keep everything as it is, and that property hasn't changed since '84, '85. Yes, there was a commercial operation going there at one time, but when the issue came up, he immediately pulled everything out and was gone. And it was a young man that was just trying to start a business. Mrs. Hill let him use the property. He did do lessons. He only had four horses. It was a very small deal, and he had a couple of kids at a time that would come over and he would do lessons. Most of them were lead line type deal, where they would lead the horses through the pasture there and teach them during the afternoon times. I think the main thing we're looking at here is that we were annexed in, we were guaranteed that we would not have to change our way of life there, and that's what we're hoping that you will see, that we would like it to stay the way it is, so we continue living our lives the way we wanted to. It's not to get off on a tangent, but it's these kind of situations that make it really hard to continue to live in our lifestyle the way we do, because everybody keeps moving in and approaching in on what we do, and we've had this area for numerous years, and I've been there for 22 years and I'm one of the young guys in there. So, I know that a lot of them agree with me on the way we live our lives, that's why we live in what used to be a county island, so we could have our animals and live the lifestyles we want to. And if you go and start making us change everything, then that changes our purpose of living and everything else, and that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, can I just clarify, are you in support or in opposition to the current request? Support, thank you. Okay, Ms., I have a card again from, or a card from Frank Engstrom. Again, if we could direct your comments towards the application at hand and not necessarily to the existing state of development.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Frank Engstrom. I've lived in the neighborhood for 20 years. The sightline out my front windows of the house is directly to the property of the complainant in this situation. I was going to talk a lot about what a nice neighborhood we have and the sort of live-and-let-live attitude we have for living there, but lots of the other folks have already covered that very well, so I won't do that. I'll talk about a little bit the issue of the shade structures, which it seems to be boiling down to right now. About 16, 18 years ago, I built a large garage in the back of my property. These are all acres, by the way. Nobody has any more than that. It's all 1.02 acres or something like that. And when I was building, wanted to get a permit to build my garage, I had it explained to me by the zoning people at the county office about what exactly constitutes temporary and permanent structures. And what he said was that anything that doesn't have a substantial foundation, in other words, can be easily torn down when work is required, is a temporary structure and is not subject to the 30-foot setback requirement. What he said was, the standard that we would apply is if somebody came in to work on something within the setback area along the property line, and we gave you, let's say, two days' notice, that whatever structure you had there had to be out of there so that the workers could come in and work, can you move it in that amount of time? If you can, then it's considered a temporary structure and is not subject to the 30-foot setback. That's the way it was explained to me, and that's the way I adhere to the rules when I built my barn, which is three feet from the property line on one side and five feet from the property line on the back line, and it was totally agreed to and permitted by the county. So, the structures that we're talking about here, that we're aiming at, the picture's down now, but the two structures that we're aiming at, right close to the complainant's property- right close to the complainant's property are nothing more than a slight extension higher of the fence and a piece of sheet metal to keep the sun off the horses. That's all they are. I wish we had a picture that would show you from the viewpoint of Washington Street, looking across at these structures. And what you would see is not a building. The building is in the middle of the property, which entirely meets the 30-foot setback. What these structures that they're complaining about are, from the edge of the street, look like a line, because all they are is a flat piece of sheet metal. So to move it back, yeah, we could move it back a few feet and be, and, you know, meet some line like three foot or five feet. But that's a lot of expense and trouble for something that is little or no impact. What this really is, is somebody who doesn't want to have horses there, finding nitpicky rules to work with to try to find a way to get around it and get rid of it. And that's what's really going on here, so.
Thank you, Mr. Engstrom. Is there any questions for Ms.?
By the way, I support Mrs. Hill.
Thank you. Board Member Peterson?
One question. The way you just described your property, you back up to Elliot. So I'm looking at Google Earth, so I'm looking down on your property. You back up to Elliot?
I'm the house at the end of the cul-de-sac. Straight off the end of the cul-de-sac.
In Washington.
So my front windows all look directly towards the complainant's property.
Okay.
She has already erected, I might add, the only one in the entire neighborhood. She's already erected a seven-foot block wall all along the north side of her property, and was very upset with us because we didn't want her to put it all the way out to the street, which would have blocked my view of the entire neighborhood. And then, and now I understand that her intent, right after this proceeding is over, her intent is to build another block wall all along the west side of her property, up against Mrs. Hill. So the fact that she needs to move something on the other side of where she's going to put up a seven-foot block wall is ludicrous. There's just no need for any of this. We're the kind of neighbors that get along with each other, and we just don't play these kind of games with each other. Now all of a sudden, it's happening, and we don't like it. And we're all worried that this could happen to us.
Thank you. I have another card from John Pierce. Again, if we could, we need to direct our comments towards the application at hand this evening.
Well, with respect to this application at hand, it seems like these two have really been at odds for years. Okay? That's what I've been told. And the fact that there's kitty equipment right next to that fence may have something to do with this. Okay, that's one. Number two, she moved in, okay, and this stuff was here. It's a horse community. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we used to have the rodeo grounds, and that was taken away. So we really don't have much space in Gilbert for horses. But this is one place where there is some space for horses. Now, I haven't been there that long. I've only been there seven years. But it was, what enticed me was the fact that we had an acre of land, okay, and we could have horses. And all this evidence talking about these stalls being either right adjacent to the property line, right on the property line, or three feet off the property line, they're all like that. Mine's too. In fact, my wife went ahead and lent this fella, okay, one of our horses and some saddles, so he could do his business. And the fact about a, what would we say, a birthday party? We have them at our house, and we allow kids to come over. And we go ahead and give them little rides, okay, in a round pen. Is that a commercial use? And the fact that, the whole reason, if we don't realize this, okay, I know you guys weren't, probably weren't around at the time. The reason why they went ahead and annexed this property is because they're having problems with, what is it, rural metro.
Water, fire, yeah.
Basically, the town said, you either annex, or you're going to lose your fire protection. So that was before I came in. But what I've heard is that it was told to them specifically, the people there in question that owned the property at the time, the properties, I should say, at Gilbert Country Acres, that, you know, the uses that were at the time, it would be annexed and grandfathered in. And they would honor that. What it seems like right now is not being honored. And then the whole idea is, when you move into a horse property, you're going to say, you don't like it? What do you, what did you move in for? So I support, I support her use.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pierce? Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Mary Ann Schreik? Again, if you could state your name and city of residence for the record?
Mary Ann Schreik, Gilbert, Arizona. Good evening. I've lived in the community since the end of 1995. I speak in favor of Ms. Hill. I just want to say it's my hope that she will be granted a variance. I also don't think there's anything wrong with having birthday parties in one's own backyard or pasture. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, last card I have is Ms. Adele Rosenbaum. If you could give your name and city of residence for the record, please?
My name is Adele Rosenbaum. And I live in Gilbert Country Acres. I live just north of Jane Hill. And I speak in favor of Jane Hill being able to continue her property use the way it is. We've lived there since 1984. And it is horse property. When we were annexed, we felt very strong-armed to, compelled unfairly to join the town. At first, I was against the annexation. And I, I know that as petitions went around, most of the neighborhood was against. I think some of the people that turned it over to get us annexed were young real estate people, and they promptly left. And we were given promises by the town that we could be grandfathered and continue our way of life. I, I think everybody in the neighborhood grew to really enjoy. Anybody that met him, Austin, who gave riding lessons there for a short time. I think it was beneficial for Jane. She's a widow, has no children. And the property never looked nicer than when he was there, helping take care of that. And it gave her some, and people that came. I never noticed a big crowd there at all. I would notice once in a while, one or two kids with a father there. And I don't know who it bothered, and I, I'm sorry that it bothered some of the neighbors. And I want to have a good neighborhood feeling with our whole neighborhood. And do have good feelings towards everyone. But do speak in behalf of Jane. Also, our properties are not big. There's other horse properties that have two and a half acres. We have one acre. And they don't really have room if they were told to change things. There's really nowhere to move their stalls. And and some things, I think, should be taken care of in a neighborly way instead of throwing the book at your neighbors. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenbaum. I have one final card from Joe Waite. If you can give your name and city of residence for the record?
Yes, ma'am. Chairman Whitman. Joseph Waite, 2650 East Washington, Gilbert, Arizona. I live immediately north of Ms. Greco and Mr. Plum's property. Love my neighbors on all sides. I live adjacent to a little piece of Ms. Hill's property, so I'm a, I'm a close neighbor there. I feel like I might be shot at from either direction for my comments tonight. I had a couple of points that I wanted to make. I do love my neighbors, and I want you to know that on all sides. We have a great neighborhood, a great relationship with all my neighbors. And so I don't want this to be anything that would be negative. I also made an addition to my home prior to the annexation into the town of Gilbert. I actually approached a lot of our neighbors in support of the annexation, thinking that it would be a positive thing, and I've found that it has been somewhat negative. I went to the county and acquired a permit to make an addition to my home. One of the requirements is that we have a 30-foot side yard setback. During the process of acquiring that permit, they looked at all of my other buildings to see if they were all permitted through the county. And they were. All of the buildings that I had there had a permit applied for that application or for those buildings through the county. I've got one small building on the very corner of my property that, very adjacent to Ms. Greco, Mr. Plummer's, and Ms. Hill's property. I would say is probably 10 foot from the side yard and probably 12 foot from the backyard. That was a, that was a permitted, acceptable building through the county at the time. They reviewed that and said that it was okay. On the matter of sunshades, horse shades, I guess we should call them, the county said that sunshades would not require a permit at that time. It would not be a requirement of the county to have those items that were considered as sunshade have a requirement of a permit through the county. Side yard setbacks were discussed during the annexation meetings with the neighbors to great extent about what would be allowed. And at the time, Mayor Berman indicated to us that nothing would change, and that if we did have issues, that we could come before this board or council and request changes that would keep our uses acceptable. We suspect that this might be part of that process, so we appreciate the opportunity to state our opinion and our points of view. I will say that I've been in the neighborhood for over 20 years. I've been there a long time. As far as I know, there have always been horses on the Hill property. I've never seen a time that, maybe a few weeks at a time, that there were no horses, but horses there all the time. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr., any questions for Mr. Waite? All right, thank you. I have a comment card from George Strittas. Yes, come to the podium if you could give your name and city of residence for the record?
George Strittas, 2662 East Vaughan Avenue. I live on the back road, the last road in the development. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. From what I've heard today, and in fact, I, this is something that I wanted to come and show this community my support as well. I've been here probably the shortest period of time, maybe five years. Been a very warm community. We moved here because of the country feel, because we could have land and property and animals and that whole idea. I have four children, and we've immensely enjoyed living in this area. Driving by Ms. Hill's property every morning, having my kids stop and say hi to the animals and those type of things is just part of the overall ambiance that we live in this area. I did want to call out one thing, which I'm having a hard time understanding. From my understanding, what I've heard here so far, the initial issue was with having commercial activities going on on the property, but yet we've continued down this zoning issue. And to me, it seems like Ms. Hill has moved as quickly as she could to resolve the commercial issue. And I just ask for you guys to take that into consideration, that, that, I think, is an indication of the community and in their attempts to resolve issues. To me, going beyond that just seems a little bit disruptive and also causing maybe excessive costly changes that are going to have to come to her, you know, out of her pocket and those type of things. And so I just want to state that I'm in support of Ms. Hill, and I think that she's done what she needed to do to resolve the issue. And I think going beyond that is really excessive. Okay?
Thank you. Just to clarify, I think the, I think Ms. Hill has requested the, has appealed, right, correct me if I'm wrong, counsel, has appealed the zoning administrators' determination that commercial stables are not permitted. So she's, I think, by doing so, wants to keep that use.
And I would support her in that as well. Honestly, like everybody else that's said here before, I think that there is, I don't see anything that was disruptive here. And I can't recall anybody saying that there's been noise after a certain time or any of those things that have been very disruptive in the sense of calling out police or anything like that. So to me, it seems as though, even from that perspective, I support her in that aspect as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Strittas? Strittas? Sorry. All right, thank you. All right. With that, well, Mr. Ray, I assume that you would, do you have anything further that you would like to add before I invite the applicant up?
Through the chair, or chairman, members of the board, thank you for, again, allowing me the opportunity to come up and speak. As I indicated in my initial comments, we are well aware that horses are permitted on the property. And we are not talking about taking away Ms. Hill's ability or anyone other, anyone, or our comments tonight are not intended to restrict anyone's ability to have horses on their property, provided they comply with the town's requirements and/or county requirements at the time of annexation. So certainly, we're not here to talk about whether or not people have horses on their property or not. We know that's a right they have. And I think as this, as this board has pointed out, the focus needs to be on the zoning administrator's interpretation as this board, and I'm not sure if members of the community are aware, there was a request filed by Ms. Hill through her attorney seeking an interpretation of how the town's ordinance applies. That resulted in the determination being issued. Ms. Hill did not agree with that and has appealed that to the Board of Commission. And so that's what we're here to talk about. We're not here to talk about other properties. Certainly, you know, I heard a lot of comments about existing structures in the area, and if Ms. Hill's got to come down, everyone else has got to come down as well. Well, as the chairman pointed out and others, we're only here focused on Mrs. Hill's property. And we don't know what the situations are on other people's properties, whether or not they were permitted, legal, those sorts of things. So with that, just a few clarifying points. We would, again, request this board's holding the zoning administrator's determination as modified by staff's request in the memo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Mr. Lasorda?
Thank you, madam chair, members of the commission. I just, I wanted to clarify something about the commercial aspects of the operation. Essentially, our interpret, what we ask for is, we don't do the riding lessons, parties, things like that. That happened for a very brief time. It doesn't happen anymore. That's not what we're talking about. Ms. Hill does like to keep horses on the property. Frankly, no one else would ever know whether they were her horses or someone else. It's not a stable, it's not a commercial operation. But we think under those circumstances, that's no more, it makes it no more, having someone else's horses that you're not compensated for makes her operation no more commercial than having a house that you let someone stay at makes your house a commercial hotel or motel. So I think it got a little sidetracked that, and it's a little bit of a red herring, the birthday parties and the riding lessons that occurred. Actually, it's been since 2013. You heard reference to Austin. He hasn't been there in a long time. And that was, Ms. Hill did stop that, as someone else alluded to. But I was, I was a little bit struck going on to the issue of what was permitted under the county and what was allowed under the county. Mr. Ray said, well, you know, if there was a permit, maybe yes, maybe no. Well, you know, I don't think we make people alter uses that have gone on for decades based on a maybe. This neighborhood, this property, everything that has happened here has been happening for generations, decades. We actually heard testimony that the county considered this use a lawful use. And I should have written it down. The gentleman testified that what the county said is their view of a shade structure such as this is that it was, it was of, I guess temporary is not quite the word, but their view of it, it was so, it could be moved such that it was not considered something that had to stay out of the 30-foot setback. We actually heard that testimony. So, you know, I think based on that and the fact that we see how uncomfortable the county was with enforcing these regulations against uses that had existed for generations, the county was so uncomfortable with it that they essentially said, look, if it's been there that long, and, you know, maybe another reason is because they had told people it was acceptable. That makes sense based on the testimony we heard. If it's been there that long, we're just going to say it's legal. And they did that because there's, this is an enforcement nightmare to begin with. It's unfair. And they lost their records to boot. And it sounds And it sounds like they were telling people it was legal. So just as the county was extremely uncomfortable, they decided they were going to allow it as a lawful use. This is exactly what this Board of Adjustment needs to do. It needs to overturn the zoning administrators' interpretation on all three points. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lozada. Vice Chairman Ayler?
I have a quick question, just to understand. So there is no compensation for, it's just people coming over for boarding, like friends and, I'm trying to understand. Are you saying there's no birthday parties anymore? No use, it's just horses coming over?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Ayler?
Yes.
Okay. That is correct. Ms. Hill likes keeping horses on the property because she enjoys the horses, but she, no, she's not running a commercial operation and there, you know, we're not, there are no birthday parties or anything of that nature anymore.
So, so what would be considered the commercial use? Understanding, I'm trying to understand this part.
Well, Mr. Madam Chair and Commissioner Ayler, that's a good question, but according to the town, if you, if you keep someone else's horse at your property, whether or not they pay you, you are running a commercial operation. Now, I agree with you that that's not, that's a little bit, that doesn't, that doesn't sort of coincide with my view of what a commercial operation is, but that's the town's view, is that if you have someone else's horse at your property, whether or not they pay you a penny, you are running a commercial operation.
Well, I'm trying, I mean, and I wish we had Mike here still, because it was nice to have him here while he was here, but I'm trying to understand, in his interpretation, was the birthday party still in operation? Or, because I don't see, or I don't understand where someone just comes over. How does this work where, so I just call her up, I want to bring my horse over, we come and have a cup of tea? I'm just trying to understand.
It's, having had horses for a long time, it's just boarding, so you pay monthly, usually a flat fee, and they board them there and they feed your horses typically, most of them do, unless you bring your own feed. And then I think what they were doing is maybe offering lessons there, maybe in the round pen or in the backyard to children, teaching them how to ride or just to care for horses or to be comfortable around horses. I think that was the...
Right, I understand, I understand that part of it. I'm talking about, we're talking about no compensation. We're talking about just, I can call up and say, I want to bring my horse and and say, thank you, and I'll be back tomorrow, and, I mean, I'm trying to understand this.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Ayler. Now, I think it's, I think she does it also out of friendship, and I think it's more longstanding than that. But it is not, it's not a profit-making commercial enterprise the way a business is, that stays in business by charging people and making a profit and it, that's not what it's about. It's about her having horses. And, you know, she's just willing to do it because she likes having horses, whether they're not, whether they're hers or not. I think right now she has one regular horse and one miniature. Is that right? Two, okay, two, yeah, two total. So...
So she's, they're boarding the horse there and somebody's paying her, to cover her costs for the feed and...
Madam Chair, Commissioner Ayler, that's correct.
Okay.
So there is a fee to cover costs.
And that's, in the report, it talks about how she does receive a payment, but the claim is that it's just reimbursement for the feed.
To make her horse.
Right, I understand that part, but I was just told there is no, no payment, and I couldn't, a payment for fee to cover costs, I could say my cost is X or Y or, I'm just,
Yeah, the report says...
I was told zero is why I was asked.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Ayler, if I, if I said, if I gave that impression, I apologize. Because what I meant is, it's, she doesn't, it's not a profit-making venture. I don't even think, I don't even think she, she gets back what she puts into it, but, you know, people do help out, but it, it's not, if I said there's no fee, I meant Ms. Hill doesn't make any money. In fact, she, I think she, she doesn't even recoup everything, but sometimes people do help out.
Okay, yeah, that's why I didn't understand.
But I think that's the, I think that's, our argument is that's the, that is the, I think, under any definition, the vernacular, the code, the difference between a commercial operation and a non-commercial operation is that a commercial is a business that's meant to make money. At least that's the intent, and that's not, that's not Ms. Hill's intent.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair Ayler. It's town staff and Catherine can correct me if I'm misstating the position. The staff's position that the LDC allows that the applicant can only have a residential stable on SF-43. To have a residential stable, it's a, the definition is in Article 6.1. It says it's a detached accessory structure for the keeping of horses, mules, and ponies owned by the occupants of the present premises and not offered for compensation. So there's two requirements. Compensation is irrelevant if the horses don't belong to the occupant.
While you're answering questions or making a point, can you clarify for us what agreements and/or statements were made by the town during annexation to these residents? Because I will tell you that my parents annexed during this time and have acreage and horses. And they were also promised during that time that no changes, lawful or unlawful, would be made to their property upon annexation. So...
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I was very involved with our town manager and police chief and fire chief and many of our management staff during 2005, '06, and '07. We held many, many open houses, 30, 40, 50, maybe, and met with many of the residents in Gilbert and in the Gilbert Planning area. We did this because we wanted to answer typical questions and review the process. And this was one of the key questions. So much so that the council adopted a policy and posted it on the webpage, which still can probably be found. And that policy or that statement was very clear in that when you annex legal, non-conforming uses and structures, of course, would be grandfathered. It was also very clear through our discussions with the neighbors over these years that we were not going to be enforcement officers, we're not going to be going out into the neighborhoods and looking for things that meet or don't meet or regulations or appear not, basically, as you stated, Madam Chair, we respond to complaints and do our research and homework. And we are responsible for following up on structures or uses that did not comply with the county before they were annexed. As the same as we do with residents today who are residents. So I do understand the comments that were made today about wanting a lifestyle not to change. However, if something is illegal, whether it's a use or a structure, and it was annexed, it's still illegal. And we wouldn't know that until we investigate.
Where dealing with this case specifically was the county's zoning ordinance at the time that the structures believe, we believe they were built in conformance, because the county's ordinance has changed a lot in the last 20, 30 years. And so it could have been, at the time it was annexed, a legal, non-conforming, or grandfathered use allowed at that time in the county, but not according to their current code, and then annexed at that time.
This is where I need help from Catherine, as she has done the research on the project dating back.
Chair Whitman. My understanding with speaking with county staff is the requirement related to boarding of other people's horses and the use permit, and also the setback requirement that those would have been in place in earlier years. I can't give you an exact date, but that is my understanding.
Okay. Yes, Vice Chairman Ayler?
Yeah, so I understand, I'm just understanding the use is if this was to go forward and the use was kept, is it with the property owner or is it with the property itself?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I believe the question is a little clarification on what a grandfathered use is. And if a use is grandfathered, it can remain throughout different ownerships, but once that use actually stops, it no longer is grandfathered.
Is there a timeframe to that?
I think our, is it six months in our town?
I think it's...
It's usually a year.
I could look it up quickly. I believe it's six months. I'll look it up as we. Yeah. I'll look it up for you.
It's usually a year in most cities, but...
So, so so it would stay with the property, it can go property owner to property owner as long as it stayed continuous for X amount of time, whatever?
It doesn't go to dormant for more than a year?
It is six months, Madam Chairman.
Okay.
I thought that from the drive-through, what you were talking about, Dairy Queen.
Oh, from down on Gilbert Road? Okay, any further questions for staff?
I have one.
Oh. Ms. Bloomfield?
Catherine. We've got the three issues. One is the commercial operation, the boarding of the horses. The second one is the shade structures, which we're hearing from residents and neighbors tonight that they went down to the county to get theirs permitted and were told that it's a temporary structure, go ahead and build it. No permits required, it's, it is what it is. It helps you. And, and since then, and and granted, after everything was annexed in, the county went back and said, we've had so many questions and issues with this. We've grandfathered them all in. Now, I understand that this property can't be considered in that grandfathering because it wasn't part of the, it wasn't under the county jurisdiction at the time, it was under town's jurisdiction. But it, it seems fairly clear that there's enough question as to whether or not it could have been permitted or maybe not. It was owned, it was built and developed by somebody else prior to Ms. Hill buying the property. I am, I am so much in favor of just calling it a legal, non-conforming use at this point and making that proposal and moving forward. I don't know if I can do that. And maybe that's something that I ask legal counsel.
Well, I would like to talk about it.
Please.
Well, we'll get to it when we bring it back.
Anything additional for staff?
Just one comment, and I think Catherine touched on it earlier, somebody did, sorry, we've had a lot of presenters. To go along with what Board Member Bloomfield just said is that some of the records from the county are also missing, potentially. We're not sure if we even have access to all of the records over the years from this property. So we don't know if potentially some of these uses were permitted at some point in time under an older code, like you just said, when it was built over, over the years. We don't know, correct?
Chair Whitman and Board Member Peterson. Our understanding is that whatever records the county had, they did share with us at at the time of annexation, and we weren't able to find in those county records any reference related to this property. In speaking with county staff specifically about the shade structure, my understanding is that anything that had a roof on it would have been required to meet setbacks. Now, it may not have required a building permit, but it still needs to comply with whatever requirements the county had in place at the time.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any further questions for staff? All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing and bring you back to the dais for discussion, possible motion. Vice Chairman?
Thank you. Well, I have a lot of mixed ideas on this project. I guess we'll go through the three pieces, kind of how we're dealing with looking at this. On the shade structures and if, dealing with the county. I deal with the county a lot in my business, and I can see where they might mention things to the public when you come in and say, oh, well, yeah, that's good. And till you actually do it or get down the line with some engineering, and then they go, oh, well, that's not what we meant. And so talking to someone at the counter, in knowing the county ordinance, I can't take that as, as information. But I do know in dealing with the county that they, they don't have all their records. I've gone and done a lot of permit research and it's so hard to find anything, especially if it was built years and years ago. I mean, things that have been done, how we do building permits today is nothing like what we used to deal with 10 years, 20 years, and it's an exponential mark. I mean, you go back 20, 30 years ago, you come in with a piece of paper, here's my idea, yeah, does it work? Yeah, here's some structural calculation, you walk out with a permit. We don't do that anymore. So, so is there a chance that the building was conforming or was, was built in thought process that I was told this is acceptable by the county, and I see that. And so I could see that these things were built X amount of years ago and, and there was a chance that they were conforming in mindset, at least. And that would be the side structure. I think the, the permanent structure, it is a permanent structure. Anything that creates a structure in the town of Gilbert that creates a shadow that goes to the ground, that's permanently attached to the ground, is a shade structure. But I still believe that there's a chance that it was done done correctly to a point, to the use. That's where I come the hardest point and and I don't, you know, commercially, I mean, having your friends, having your horses over or someone you've known for many years and just, hey, this is enough for feed, you know? I can see that. My issue is, is that once his property is sold or handed off, that the next owner of this property might not look at it that way. And we've given the right to, hey, you can have a commercial stable here. You can have everything you want, you know, we've given this right. So my issue isn't having my friends over, having people who I know that over the years, and I'm not making money on this. That part I'm fine with, but, but you're drawing the line, saying this is commercial. And, and if it's an actual commercial use, I couldn't be in favor of that because you're, you're opening Pandora's Box or someone down the road to have a full stable, and if you like it or you don't. And so I wouldn't, my viewpoint would be to keep the structures, if this is a possible motion, to keep the structures that they were legal at time of building and to keep them by right, but not the use of the actual commercial use to the space, to boarding horses.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson?
To piggyback the commercial issue. If Mrs. Hill, I brought my horse to Mrs. Hill's house and I brought the feed with me and the horse was all self-contained, being fed, being taken care of, everything by Mrs. Hill, then it would not be a commercial issue?
No, it would, because it's not owned by the property owner.
It's not owned by the property owner.
So she can't even have a...
She can't have somebody else's...
Legally.
It's not that it necessarily be a commercial use, Madam Chair, Commissioner Peterson, is that it would not be a residential stable at that point?
Because a friend brought a horse over to visit? So somebody rides their horse over, like one of the gentlemen said earlier, and comes and puts it in the stable and stays for a few hours or overnight, it becomes a non-residential stable?
I'd have to pull the code back up to see what sort of timeframe was given there, as I don't recall, I don't believe it specified. But to be a residential stable, which is the only type of stable that would be permitted on SF-43, the only type of stable to be permitted on SF-43, the horses would need to be owned by the occupant of the home.
It's almost as if Chair Whitman brought her kids to my house, does my house all of a sudden become a daycare, because I'm feeding them and taking care of them?
And I pay you usually.
Is it a-
And I pay you usually.
Right. So you'd want to-
It's a commercial business.
Or bring food and snacks to take care of the children. So does my home become a daycare? So, that's what I was comparing it to in my head, because I was trying to figure out, how does this work? It's a horse. If I dog sit my friends' dogs at my home, does my house become a kennel, because they brought their dogs over? Does it become a commercial kennel, then, in R-18, or whatever I live in, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, or SF-8, whatever I live in. So that is perplexing to me, that maybe the code is a little confusing in this case, where horses are allowed on the property anyway, because I'm allowed to have dogs, and I'm allowed to have kids over. But does it change the status of my property?
Well, I think there's limitations, like, on those type of operations, like, there's numbers for daycare, there's numbers for kennel. I'm thinking we might have found somewhere in the code that we need, maybe into the future, look into this in the near future, as fast as we can move it, to say, "This needs a new definition." And luckily, we're working on the code as we speak.
Right, and I think that that might be the issue, is because the way I'm looking at it, if I compare, if I compare it to other things, does it change other residences, based on those couple of examples, even?
And I think, piggybacking off of what you're saying, I think that maybe the major issue was whatever lessons were occurring, or the advertising that was occurring on the property. I don't think anybody probably would have noticed, or had paid much attention, if somebody was just simply boarding their horse there. But I think the commercial operation really was related more to what was being advertised and being, occurring on the property outside of just boarding.
Because it becomes, then, an enforcement issue, and how is code going to know that someone has brought their horses there, and that they're not actually Mrs. Hill's, and that she's keeping them overnight, or for a week, or a weekend, or whatever the case may be?
And I think in this particular instance, the limitation's already set by code about how many livestock can be had on one particular property. So I don't think you're going to have a huge issue with a major boarding facility, because they're already limited by the number of horses, based on the acreage of the lot. I think the real true issue comes, in my perspective, is, is there any other commercial activity occurring on that property, lessons or whatever?
Right. And it looks like Mrs. Hill's already taken care of that, that the other business is no longer existing, and they've said even since 2013, so she moved right away to remove that.
To rectify that, right.
Is that to staff, is that if we moved away from a residential stable, that it still would be limited to four, because of the zoning itself, that there could still never be more than four, if we have a non-residential stable on the property?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, the size of the lot determines how many horses you can have, and since this is a residential zoning district, it doesn't meet the size limits. I believe it's 10 acres for a commercial stable, and this is only one acre, so it can only be a residential stable, with four horses.
So, what would we be, if we were moving away from a residential stable, what would we be becoming?
I think that you would, I think if there, pardon me, my opinion is that I think if we were going to find something, we would find that the boarding of horses at the property doesn't constitute a commercial stable. Despite what, despite what counsel's probably going to tell us, no.
Could you repeat that, Madam Chair?
That the boarding of horses on a property does not constitute, or should not be considered a commercial stable.
Boarding, but with no payment?
I don't think payment's even an issue. I think it's the ownership of the horse, and the ownership of the lot.
I think the confusion here is, even if you determine that the applicant was not operating a commercial stable, she would still have to be operating at least a residential stable to be legal on her lot. To be a residential stable, you cannot be boarding the horses of others. Under the, under the LDC, as it's currently written, if you board the horses of others, you cannot be considered a residential stable, and that is the only type of stable that would be permitted on an SF-43 lot.
In the county's ordinance, does residential stable, is residential stable defined the same?
I'll defer to Catherine. I understand that there's a difference between the county ordinance at the time of annexation and what is there today.
Because if it was legal to board other people's horses at the time that it was annexed, then I assume they'd be grandfathered in.
And Catherine can correct me, but I believe that it was not legal at the time of annexation to board the horses of others in the county.
Chairman Whitman, yes, that's correct. My understanding from the county is that the time of annexation, they did not allow, did not permit the boarding of other people's animals without a use permit.
And, and we still don't know if there's, if there are any records?
Well, a use permit would be in the record.
Yeah.
Well, you would hope they wouldn't be lost.
You would hope, oh.
Yeah.
Building permit.
At the county, yeah.
So, going back to the question, if we were to find, the only way you can have a stable is to have a residential stable. So, what would we be going away from at that point? What would we be determining if we can't, if we're determining that a residential stable can have boarding?
I think what staff is trying to tell us is that, number one, they don't have the acreage to have a commercial stable, so we couldn't overturn the ZA's determination to permit a commercial stable, because that's not even allowed by code standards or requirements, and wasn't allowed at the time that the zoning, or maybe the property was annexed from the county. And I think what they're also trying to infer is that, that the code, as it's written, and the county's code at the time of annexation, does not permit the boarding of anybody's horses other than the property owners. And so therefore, there's really no way for us to find any differently.
I, I agree with that. I think, I think that we can say, the shade structures are there, they're legal, they're non-conforming, but there's enough hands being, there's enough handcuffs in this thing, as far as locking us out of being able to do what we want to do. There has to be another way around it, and a loophole is, Ms. Hill gets granted the horses.
Well, she already has the right to use the horses, but I don't think we can grant-
Right, but they need to be her horses.
Right.
So if they were sold to her for a dollar, so that she could keep them in there, until such time that the other people wanted to buy them back for a dollar and move them off, all is good, because they're her horses.
Madam Chair, and I-
It's who wrote the, who wrote the most accurate document, or binding document, that we could adhere to.
Commissioner Cavani?
But-
Our Board Member Cavani?
Go ahead, legal, yeah.
Madam Chair, I think the commission may be going down a road it doesn't need to at this time. The question before you is whether the applicant was operating a commercial stable at the time of the complaint, and that's the only question you need to answer. The distinction of what is a residential stable, I believe, was raised just to sort of draw that comparison of what would be allowed. We're not asking you to, excuse me, the town staff, the applicant is not asking you to determine whether she meets the definition of a residential stable. She's appealing the conclusion that she was operating a commercial stable, and that she's not allowed to operate a commercial stable. Does that make sense?
No, it definitely does. I think we're just having a hard time wrapping our brain around the definition, as provided in the code, about what a commercial stable is versus what a residential stable is, and maybe what the intent should have been.
And Madam Chair, I believe, I'll stand by the comments I just made. I believe that the question doesn't need to go as deep as the commission is taking it.
You're saying that the time of the citation is when we're determining when they were having riding lessons, or were you, after that was stopped?
The zoning interpretation addresses the activities that were observed at that time, and the appeal is the conclusion about those activities.
Well, I think the motion before us is whether we agree to uphold the decision of the zoning administrator that a stable, a commercial stable, is not a permitted use. So, we either agree that a commercial stable is not a permitted use, or we don't.
Correct, and there are several issues within the appeal, within the zoning interpretation. That's one of the questions, yes.
Right.
A question of whether the applicant is operating a residential stable is not-
Correct. Commissioner Sipple?
It's wonderful when things come to us that have the spirit of the law and the letter of the law. I think that's what we have here in front of us this evening, or I believe that we do. When we go back to 2013, no one here is denying that Austin wasn't doing a little business there. I've heard multiple people in the neighborhood agree that he was offering a business. We've got Facebook posts, we've got other documentation in our packet that shows he was charging. But when Ms. Hill may or may not have realized that he shouldn't have been doing that, it sounds like she asked him to cease doing that. Unfortunately, the process had already started at that point, and that's what's in front of this board, I believe, is for us to make a determination on that. Now, when that came, there are now consequences. We have documentation, or we don't have documentation, that a shade structure is either conforming or non-conforming on that property. It looks like there's a couple of facilities that are in question on the property. Those are consequences from the business that was not allowed to be used, that was used on the facility, or on the property during a period of time. So we have two property owners here. We have the neighbors, who are, look, this is not appropriate use. And we've got residents that are, we've got a great neighborhood, and can't we just all work this out and figure it out, because we're all going to be in trouble now, maybe. So it's a very difficult situation, in which I think that this board is sitting at, but one that I believe we need to look straight at, the facts that are presented to us, at the time that they were presented to us, when the complaint was made. And so, that's kind of where I stand. I know I'm not necessarily giving an answer, I'm just trying to maybe help our town attorney to bring it back into, we need to look at these pieces right here and move forward on that. Outside of-
Right.
-feelings and emotions, it's the hard facts and data that are presented here to us this evening, which are going to be popular for some, and not popular for others, just like if it was a different business that all of a sudden sprouted up, and the neighbors maybe didn't like it, and eight of them didn't like that. They would be here as well, because they're obviously a tight-knit community. So I want to make sure that we bring back and then look at those pieces, no matter how popular or unpopular they might be, at our decision point time.
Commissioner Cavani?
I'm usually very vocal, I'm quite quiet tonight, I know, I apologize. All right, so even though it's been stated that we need to understand, at the time of the complaint, how it was, I really think in the end, the decision we're trying to make tonight is, what's it supposed to look like tomorrow? Because in the end, that's what really matters, is going forward, does this property conform? And so, so I think, looking at what we've seen tonight, I understand the use issue, and I think that Board Member Ayler's idea to revisit the definition of do, and we cap the number of animals on the property. So you can only get so big, anyway, with your operation, whether it's having friends' horses or boarded horses, whatever it is. I don't think that that's a big issue, and I think we could probably revisit our definition, like you suggest. I think it's a great idea, and maybe remove that one component. And that's not going to happen tonight, that's not part of our activities tonight. But I think, as we look at the future of this situat, this case, that's, maybe it's not conforming tomorrow in that fashion, but as we're able to revisit that issue, it can become conforming. So maybe they cease and desist for the interim, and then when we make that happen, they can reinstate what they were doing. As far as the structures go, I am, I am honestly compelled by the grandfathering component here. These people have been here a very long time, and I don't think, as I've looked at all the Google Maps from every angle, street view, everything, and I don't see that these are egregious structures in any fashion, from just a real-world perspective, stepping away from what setbacks were required at any given time. I do think the county situation is troubling, that there isn't a record of permits, but at this point, I'm willing to consider that this particular property, and I think we need to make sure there's some distinction and differentiation, so we don't promulgate a problem elsewhere in the town. But I do believe that a grandfathering component is merited on that, on that measure. So I think those are the two main points for me. I think we can find a resolution here to allow this property to stay in its current condition. I think we need to probably ask that any commercial activities, from a perspective of boarding, be ceased for the time being, until we can revisit the matter, the definition.
Commissioner Blazer?
I keep going back to 1984, when the, when the property was purchased, and it's in the same condition that it was in 1984. So, I would be in favor of the grandfather, of grandfathering this in also. But the use being a separate issue, I would agree that non-commercial use, or, excuse me, a commercial use should not be permitted in this instance.
Commissioner Peterson?
Chairman, I think, I think we've discussed it enough, and I think I'm willing to take a shot at a motion two or three, if everybody's ready. I'm going to start with the most obvious one, because I think-
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I interject, Commissioner Peterson, just one moment? I would encourage the commission to explicitly state the evidence upon which it is making its decision as part of your motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, make it a little more difficult, because it's not already difficult enough. I'm going to, I'm going to take it right from Catherine's motions that she provided for us in the staff report, because it's probably the easiest thing to do and the most straightforward. So I think we're all in agreement that we will move to overturn the decision of the zoning administrator that interprets the location of the fenced corral area used to house animals as not in compliance with code, and instead find them to be allowed under the land development code, or alternatively to be legal non-conforming issues. Does that cover it?
Uses, yes.
Oh, sorry, uses, sorry.
On what evidence would the commission be relying on to determine that they are legal non-conforming uses?
She already stated it.
It's in the staff report.
Yeah, it's under the LDC-
Under the-
For that portion of it, for the fencing.
It was right there in the motion. I read it from Catherine's motion.
Yeah.
Because they're already permitted and allowed by the LDC.
She made that one very clear for us.
So we're talking just about the fence?
We moved to number three, we skipped, yeah.
Sorry.
I was moving ahead.
I went to see-
She skipped ahead.
I'm working backwards, because it seems to be the most obvious thing to start with.
Low-hanging fruit.
Second.
You have a motion and a second.
Oh, sorry, just for that one? We have to do separate motions?
Let's, I think it's probably easier for us, and I think it's probably easier for our recorder to maybe keep them straight.
Fair enough.
Certainly. I have a motion by Commissioner, Board Member Peterson, second by Board Member-
Bloomfield.
Bloomfield, sorry.
It's okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Okay, next motion? There are going to be three motions here, just for clarification.
Mr. Ray was standing, is he allowed to speak?
Not at this point, I don't think so.
Nope.
I think we're pretty much done. Okay. Move to uphold, I mean, excuse me, move to overturn the decision of the zoning administrator for the location of the shade accessory structures, because we find that they were legal non-conforming uses on the property.
Structures?
Structures, at the time of annexation?
Oh, sorry, structures. I gave my mic, sorry.
At the time of annexation?
At the time of annexation, we found they were legal non-conforming structures.
And should be grandfathered in.
Oh, okay. And they should be grandfathered in?
With what evidence?
What evidence specifically leads you to that conclusion?
Hearing the evidence that was presented here tonight by staff, and the people that presented, and the photographs that were presented, we believe that those structures were always on the property. We'll go back to 1984, all the way forward, and we find them to be legal non-conforming uses under those. uses under those. Structures.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Blazer? Okay, a motion by Commissioner Peterson, a second by Commissioner Blazer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously.
The third one's not going to be easy, because I know, as Board Member Sipple said, we need to separate this. And legally binding by what we have and what we've been presented tonight, we need to move forward with this case, and we're going to need to find on this last issue. I'm going to move to uphold the decision of the zoning administrator concluding that a stable commercial is not permitted use on the subject property. Well, it's right here. It's currently defined a stable commercial.
Do I have a second?
Second. That's me.
Blazer? Okay, a motion by Commissioner, or Board Member Peterson, a second by Board Member Blazer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. And with that concluding comment, we'd like to make sure that we give direction to staff to bring back the definition of residential boarding to be revisited in the code as part of an amendment.
And I want to say thank you to all of the residents, because you really did a great job representing your neighborhood tonight, and I wish that all neighborhoods in Gilbert came together exactly like you've done. It's really a pleasure to have you here. I attended a lot of the meetings that Planner Edwards discussed with the annexation process. I heard all of the legal non-conforming stuff. It's very confusing. It's been years, you've been there for years. Stick with this, Mrs. Hill. You did the right thing by conforming when you were asked to. So, good luck moving forward.
Yes, let's finish the Board of Adjustment first. Item number 16 minutes, consider approval of the Board of Adjustment minutes for the July 2, 2014 meeting.
Move to approve?
Second.
Who was second? Sorry, Sipple?
Me.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Peterson, second by Commissioner Sipple. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. With that, we'll adjourn the Board of Adjustment meeting and take a quick recess.
Thanks.
We start.
And are there any additional comments?
Oh, Chairman, I'll add to that and say, yes, your early ballots are in your mailboxes. If you haven't checked your mail this week, they'll be in your mailboxes. The other thing to note is that you can come down here to the municipal center and vote Monday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., until the Thursday before Election Day, so like the 22nd or 23rd of August. And make sure you sign those, you fill out those ballots, put them in the yellow envelopes, return them, sign them on the back, date them, and return them. Free postage.
Any voting recommendations?
All right, any further comments? Okay, moving on, Agenda Item Number 18, Report from the Council Liaison, and she has left the building. So, she had way too much fun this last item. Yeah, and so, she unfortunately could not stay. Moving on, Agenda Item Number 19, Report from the Planning Services Manager on Current Events.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, I really don't have anything for you. As always, thank you so much for all the work you put into assisting our public, and our customers, and our residents, and it's very much appreciated.
Thank you. I assume that we don't adjourn now, that we would move back to recess to the study session. Agenda Item Number Five, I believe it is. So, it's review... Poor Jordan, sorry. Agenda Item Number Five, on the study session, is Z14-15, Review Amendments to Land Development Regulations and Site Regulations in All Zoning Districts, Sign Regulations and Subdivision Regulations. With that, Mr. Jordan Feld.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I will keep this very brief. So, last time, we talked about this land development code cleanup that staff would be undertaking, as well as developing this new land use table. Bob is still working on that, and staff is putting together the various text amendments to help clean up the code. Tonight, this is our first study session on our first batch of text amendments, and so I just want to quickly go through that. And also, just a gentle reminder, tonight's suggestions regarding a possible change in the land development code are great. In that same vein, we would continue to come to staff with other changes you would like to see us research and evaluate, and possibly bring back to the commission. But this is the formal language for Z1415, which is our land development code cleanup. As we talked about last time, as we're going through the land development code, and staff over the last couple of years, with our various stakeholders in the business community, the neighborhoods, et cetera, looking at ways to improve the land development code, either through removing conflicting regulations, antiquated regulations, areas where the business community, or others feel like we're perhaps over-regulating a particular site feature, or in some cases, there's actual errors that we're correcting. So, this first batch of text amendments includes 10 distinct items, changing the hours of operation for medical marijuana, the drive-through facility separation requirements from residential uses, the expiration, automatic expiration for minor land divisions and minor subdivisions, the allowance of accessory retail sales in employment districts, the screening of first-floor multifamily private open space, the definition of detached buildings, the size of accessory structures, and I missed guest quarters, the ability to locate guest quarters on a single-family residential lot, parking in side yard setbacks, and finally, providing more flexibility with tower and freeway signage. So, I'll just quickly go through each one. The little buttons on the top kind of indicate why we're changing this. In this particular sense, we felt that the current standard for medical marijuana facilities was an overregulation. We looked at 10 or so different jurisdictions, with the exception of one, all of them had a closing hour of at least 7:00 p.m. So, just to, you know, in that sense, going from 6:00 to 7:00 is, you know, providing more flexible regulation of your will, and consistent with other jurisdictions. When it comes to drive-through facilities, we have two different areas in the code that address this issue. By way of implementation, we've generally gone with this one that you're not seeing stricken through, which is, drive-through facilities should be a minimum of 50 feet from property designated residential. There's another requirement elsewhere in the code that talks about 100 feet from single-family, and then it provides several kind of exceptions to that. Again, in practice, we implement the 50-foot standard, and really don't ever get complaints about that 50-foot standard. So, then, again, this is a good example of where we're kind of reducing the regulation to meet what has been implemented, as well as kind of clarify some conflicting regulation. This is a clear error, a technical cleanup, this third one. Currently, the code states, your minor land division or minor subdivision expires after two years. Well, it's meant to say, if you haven't recorded that approved minor land division or minor subdivision, it expires. So, we're simply putting that language in there. This issue comes up, particularly from the business community, but it is a fairly progressive way of looking at lighter industrial districts or employment districts, giving them flexibility to do onsite retail, either with product they manufacture themselves, or, you know, in the supply chain, oftentimes, we've seen where a particular manufacturer will benefit from selling the products of related... from selling the products of related items to the product they actually make. So essentially, with this part of the text amendment, A4, for the BP and LI districts, we're increasing the amount of retail sales to 20% of the GFA, the gross floor area, and for our heavy industrial district, the GI, we're allowing for 10% of the gross floor area to be used for accessory retail. Was there a question?
On the, going back to that table, the principal use and determination, I'm thinking more of where this comes into effect. I've got a door company, and I manufacture doors, and I want a little showroom in the front, or just pick an item, and then this comes into the 20%. My question becomes, principal use, what happened? Does that include, like, storage areas? Because my use is actual manufacturing, but I, and so is that work also with picking up storage areas or ancillary use? I'm a little worried about the principal use, because there's a lot of ways to define these things. So maybe, I don't know what the wording would be, but I see the intent.
Of our scarfeed building.
Yeah, of the tenant use. I just, I just question the principal use, if that's the right word or not.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, we will clarify when we come back for the public hearing, we will clarify. It sounds like you want to make sure that that percentage is based off the primary structure alone, not accessory structures or other.
Right, I just want more of a define to the use, because I think you need to show, right, and I've actually come into this where, like, an auto parts guy, he's a mechanic, and he wants to sell car covers and stuff like that, and you can only have this little tiny thing, but he still needs an office, and, you know, how do you start defining all the things? I think it gets a little tricky, so.
I'll pitch in real quick, only because we deal with this a lot. It is the gross floor area of the tenant.
Okay.
And so it's everything that they need, the office, the storage, the bathrooms, the whatever. It's their gross floor area that they lease or own.
Right, and that's where I want to get to. That's the right, but I just want to make sure, principal use, I don't know the definition of principal use.
Well, the principal use is typically, the umbrella is the business license. The business license for that business, that's the principal use, the business license.
Okay.
And it's all of the gross floor area, so it's everything. So if you have 10,000-square-foot warehouse that has, you can just imagine how many bits and pieces of uses that they have within it. It would be 20% of that.
Including accessory structures?
No, because that is outside the building. This is the gross floor area of the tenant.
Okay. And I was going to hold back my questions until you went through, but back to the car and the drive-through, real quick, is that to the lane, or is that to the call box, or?
To the lane, Mr. Vice Chair, and that was part of the implementation confusion, is, you know, one says drive-through aisle, one says drive-through facility, do you interpret that to mean that the McDonald's itself is the drive-through facility, or is it the box? We interpret it to mean the actual box, or, you know, the lane, where you're doing the actual drive-through activity, not the structure itself, which could be another 50 feet closer.
Right.
So, sorry, so it's not the lane, it's the speaker box, or a menu board?
The speaker box itself, no. I'm sorry, I'm getting a no from.
I'll pitch in again, I'm happy to help. The drive-through facility, the separation, is the actual drive lane. So the outside lane, because that's where the noise and activity.
Begins.
Begins. Thank you.
So you do like a buffer, like you would do for, you have a point, and then you say 50-foot, there's your radius, and stay out of that? Okay.
So would that be amended, then, to define that in more detail? That the closest, closest feature of a drive-through facility shall be, I don't know, I mean.
Commissioner Cavani, we can certainly consider an exhibit showing that clearly.
Yeah.
Good way to go. Go ahead.
Thank you. Excellent suggestions, thank you. Moving on to A5, Private Open Space Screening. Currently, the code says, for ground-floor multifamily private open space, so this is like a patio attached to your ground-floor apartment unit, you can have a wall no less than four feet, up to six feet. In many cases, a three-foot wall would be acceptable. There's no building code prohibition of a three-foot wall for a ground-floor unit. And this comes from builders asking us, why can't we do a three-foot wall? Why a four-foot? There was no good explanation to that, hence the proposed text amendment. The detached building definition, currently, we say that a building is detached when it's separated five feet from another building. We looked at several zoning ordinances and building code, IRC. There is no such standard like that. In fact, most times, it's simply defined as a building is detached when it's not permanently affixed into another building. So that is the language that we're putting forward for the study session. Certainly, if there's, you know, better language from the Commission, we would love to hear it. Guest quarters, currently, it's not completely clear, well, in some ways, it's outright prohibited, but the ability to do what I would consider a carriage house, or guest quarters above the garage on a residential lot, very much should be allowed. It's consistent with smart growth tenants. I think it probably was originally intended to be that way, but the language itself doesn't allow for that. So we're modifying the language to allow guest quarters above a garage, regardless of the actual height of the primary structure. I would note that that guest quarter would have to meet the height standards, though, of the Bay zoning district. The A tier, our eighth in the text amendment, first batch, the code currently says that accessory structures requiring a building permit larger than 120 square feet, or, excuse me, 120 square feet or larger, shall comply with the following regulations. This is taken out of the residential section of the code. The IRC, International Residential Code Standard, is actually 200 square feet. The IBC standard is 120 square feet. So the applicable standard to have in this section of the code is actually 200 square feet, and that is the proposed change.
I have a question to that, in the 200 to 120. This, this only is based for residential, then, this definition?
This is specific to residential, yeah. Again, specific to residential, allowing for an additional parking space in the side-yard setback if it's not a corner lot or otherwise visible from the right-of-way, so fairly straightforward. Interior flag lots may have a parking space constructed in the required sideyard building setback. And finally, tower and freeway signs. Tower signs, I believe, are allowed to go up to 16 feet. Freeway signage is allowed to go up to 60 feet and must be located adjacent to a freeway. Currently, only the commercial districts are allowed to have these types of signage. We get numerous calls and, you know, complaints, I guess, that office employment districts aren't allowed these same provisions, or public facility, even institutional uses. We've had some discussion about allowing these signs in residential districts that have non-residential uses. You know, we're on the fence, if you will, about that one. There are standards in place that require a setback for freeway signs from residential parcels. So in theory, you could have a non-residential use on a residential parcel, it would still have to meet the separation requirement for freeway signs from a residential use. But it is a matter of debate, and, you know, certainly, the Commission's input into tower freeway signs in a residential district for a non-residential use. Madam Chairman.
Question for you with respect to that. Can you give me an instance or an example of the non-residential use in a residential zoning district?
That would require, like, a freeway sign?
Yeah. Is there something in the town?
Tough to come up with that. I'm not aware of any in the town.
So why are we, is there a specific instance why we're proposing this, then?
There is not. In fact, we were kind of throwing it out.
Okay.
Anything non-residential might be appropriate for this type of signage, but as we looked at it, more and more, it kind of felt like, hmm, let's probably keep it as just office employment, public institutional.
Another question I had is, what about the situations where we have a mixed-use parcel on a commercial piece of property? I know that we just went through the regional commercial changes to allow resident multifamily and residential, I think, mixed use is in it. Would this, would the code currently allow any type of freeway signage for a residential component of advertising, or is it strictly limited to commercial, office employment, public facility?
I'll defer to the Planning Manager on that one.
We're going to have to think on that one and get back with you, because I don't think we've had that situation come up, so.
I just don't.
We'll look at the language carefully, and we'll get back with you.
And not that I'm supporting that at all, I'm just trying to think outside the box, and if, I mean, I could see a multifamily residential developer coming in and realizing that he can do that, and realizing that he can get some visibility on the freeway to, you know, his use, so.
But Chairwoman, it would be my recommendation, we avoid this one unless a case comes forward where we need to reconsider. I just think if we start allowing freeway signs at basically every use, we're going to have a real clutter of freeway signs along our freeways. So I like going to the office, I think moving it to the office, fair enough, there are some fairly decent-sized office complexes that merit perhaps such a sign, and of course, retail, commercial-type stuff, but, boy, residential, I'd stay away. That'd be my recommendation.
Well, I mean, in a mixes like RC, we have this mixed-use idea. I mean, so we're saying, if there was one near the freeway that's mixed-use, that it can only, only put up the tower for the.
Okay, so mixed-use might be a little different scenario, because mixed-use is generally, predominantly more the commercial with just a, with a residential component on top or something, much like Kirland, I mean, that's where my mind goes. And in that case, would we merit a freeway sign? Perhaps, perhaps, that's a doable thing, yeah.
And maybe if it's only, if it's all components of the mixed-use are included on the same sign?
Yeah.
So it's not just residential being advertised?
Well, I would never propose advertising residential.
Well, I think we need to clarify.
Yeah, on a sign. I think at this point, we just don't allow them on anything with residential, and let's see if any cases come forward asking.
Well, I think it's a commercial zoning district. So the commercial zoning district permits a freeway sign by rights.
Oh, then maybe that's your right.
So if residential is permitted in the commercial zoning district, then, in essence, unless we have a restriction, they can construct.
Maybe that's where we should go with it, is restricting residential advertising on.
Or having the residential be included as part of the mixed-use sign, including commercial or whatever other component of that mixed-use site, so that it's all in one sign, that you're advertising for the center or the development as a whole, as a mixed-use development, rather than singly for the residential component?
Yeah, we probably need to discuss that more. Yeah, I don't know what harm it would do necessarily, it just feels wrong, so, all right. Is that your last one? I'd like to just, just make a comment on the very first one. I just cannot see any compelling reason to extend access to the marijuana dispensaries, the hours of operation. In fact, I would propose that we be as restrictive as the most restrictive and take it from, what is it, nine to five, Mondays through Fridays, as Fountain Hills does. So that would be my recommendation.
I'm going to have to counter that, because we're only going to eventually have two medical marijuana dispensaries in the town of Gilbert. We have one now that seems to be running fine, I haven't heard anything otherwise, and we have to look at them almost like a pharmacy or compounding pharmacy, the same type of facility, and people live and work within the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So I think that one hour isn't going to make a difference when we're only going to have two in the long run in Gilbert. So I just want everybody to keep an open mind about that.
Well, I would suggest, then, one hour more isn't needed either, so, yeah.
And that's possible. That's possible. It's just that I'm saying, we need to keep an open mind, because they are like a pharmacy, and people have to get to them outside of working hours, and 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. is when people work.
Yeah.
With, you know, with commute time, travel time, people may not necessarily be able to access their pharmacy that's closest to them, is the way I'm looking at them.
Fair enough. I would propose not changing it, then. At, at best, or at worst, I should say, at best, I propose maybe one hour a day. No, not on the record, that's a joke, all right.
That does conclude staff's report. There is, at the end of the long-winded staff report, a brief glimpse of the next batch of text amendments that we will be bringing forward. So at our next meeting, we'll have a public hearing on the 10 that we're looking at tonight, as well as several more that we'll take on study session to begin looking.
Great, can you include the residential stables as part of that?
Absolutely.
Perfect, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Feld. Appreciate your presentations this evening. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn the study session and the Planning Commission meeting?
So moved.
All right, thank you, everyone.